Tony Snyder, Fire Chief Salina. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I do have some guests, but I will introduce them afterwards.
Yeah.
Or after the proclamation reading. City of Salina Fire Prevention Week 2023. Whereas the City of Salina is committed to ensuring the safety of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are at other locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires killed more than 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires. And whereas, cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments responded to more than 1,000, one, excuse me, 166,400 home fires caused by cooking annually between 2016 and 2020. And whereas, two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of those fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas, more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas, children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas, Salina residents should turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Always keep a lid nearby when cooking. Keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven, and other things that could get hot. Watch what they heat, and set a timer to remind them that wherever they are cooking. Whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. Whereas, the City of Salina responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through the prevention and protection education. And whereas, Salina residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, in 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore it be resolved that I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the City of Salina. And I urge all people of Salina to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2023, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Salina Fire Department. In witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed the second day of October 2023.
Thank you.
That was a lot. Sorry about that, folks. I know you're going to have some questions, Mr. Mayor, but I'll let you start because I have it planned out to introduce this young lady.
Yeah, you want to just fill us in on what is scheduled for the month?
Absolutely, absolutely. So actually, we started quite some time ago, but I will cover that shortly. Today, we started with our fire safety house, taking that out to the schools. There are nine schools that will be participating this year. So it takes some time to take it out, get it set up. So we had to start it today, which is before the 8th. But in order to get everybody done and to get the children involved and provide them some, some opportunities to see what we can help them with, so they take it home to their families. So we started that. We have touch-a-truck opportunities going on, meet the firefighters, station tours, the fire safety house that I just mentioned. What we started a while ago was the fire safety poster context, contest. That was a contest partnership between USD 305, Salina Fire Department, Blue Beacon Truck Wash, and Sign Pro. This is the second year of the art contest, and participation has grown. All primary students can participate, and the children get the opportunity to create a poster based on the theme that incorporates the theme again for this year. Each school gets to pick a poster to represent their school, and then they're brought, and brought to the firehouse, and we all review them, and we rate them, and then we select one as the winner. So I would like to introduce Ms. Ellie Johnson. She's this year's winner for Meadowlark Ridge Grade School. She's a student of Ms. Maring's second-grade class, and we'd like to show you what she came up with, and like to have her parents come up, if you don't mind, her parents, Kellen and Sierra, as well. And we'll show everybody what, what we have here. Here, come on around here. Stand around.
Wow.
We were going to have it drop from the ceiling, but that was too fast.
Yeah. So, let's turn it around so that... Yeah, turn around and make sure the camera can see it, and...
Absolutely. And we'll be right here to see it.
Thank you. Let me come around there, and we'll take a picture. That way...
I think the photographer's coming at you, yeah, from the other side.
Ellie, congratulations.
Look right here. Say, look right here. Okay. Yeah, look right here. Okay. Yeah, right there. Sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. I would, Chief Snyder, I'd like to thank the Fire Department for their work on educating students. I also have a second-grade granddaughter, and you worry about your children, but I think you worry about your grandchildren more. So, thank you very much for all your education, so, and trying to keep them safe. Okay, that will lead us to item 3.3.
Item 3.3, recognition of the month of October 2023 as Bullying Prevention Month. Vicki Price, CAPS Education Director, will read the proclamation, accompanied by Kenley Rojas from Lakewood Middle School, Isaiah Boswell from Sacred Heart Junior Senior High School, and Sophia Torres from South Middle School.
Whereas, bullying is defined as unwanted, offensive, intimidating, or aggressive behavior combined with an abusive power to purposely cause another person physical, mental, or emotional pain. And whereas, bullying is widespread and occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through techno- technology now more than ever. And whereas, bullying negatively impacts all youth involved, including those who are bullied, those who bully others, and those who witness bullying known as bystanders.
And whereas, 1 in 4 students in Kansas reported being cyberbullied in 2020, and thousands of Kansas children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually. And whereas, targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And whereas, children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent and self-destructive behaviors.
And whereas, children who witness bullying often less feel, often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Michael Hoppick, Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Bullying Prevention Month, and encourage schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adolescents. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, and be affixed the second day of October 2023.
Thank you. Very good job, all three of you. Appreciate it. I don't, I don't know if you guys are going to answer this, or if Ms. Price is going to answer this, but do you have any activities scheduled this month?
Vicki goes into classrooms and educates...
Vicki, could you pull her mic down? I'm sorry, so the radio, or so television can pick her up also.
Point it right at her.
Yeah, there you go.
Um, Vicki goes to classrooms and educates children about prevention of bullying.
That is correct. But also, we think bullying should be an everyday thing, an every-month thing, not just during this month, but thank you for the opportunity to bring it forward for this month. Could we have a picture of all of you?
You could do that, yes.
There you go, Isaiah. You get to hold it. I tried it, too. They don't even be on television. Oh, 8,000.
It's always exciting to see the young, I'm going to call them young adults, to participate. So thank you for being here again. Okay, that will lead us to 3.4.
Item 3.4, recognition of the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Mary Cookson, victim advocate with the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, also known as D-VAC, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilman, thank you for having us here. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansas, including the City of Salina. And whereas, relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically many are tarnished by one's person's feelings of entitlement to power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear. And whereas, domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercive control and abuse. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides comprise 14% of all homicides in the U.S., and that women are more than twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. The Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports 32 domestic violence homicides were 18% of all homicides in Kansas in 2021. And whereas, can, in Kansas in 2021, a domestic violence abuser murdered another person every one day, 9 hours, 45 minutes, and 4 seconds. A domestic violence abuser committed a violent act, reported to law enforcement every 23 minutes, 16 seconds. And law enforcement made an arrest due to domestic violence every 47 minutes, 22 seconds. And whereas, domestic violence served, or whereas, D-VAC served 959 victims within our 10 counties, 800, 487 of which were from Celine County. And yet, these numbers do not accurately reflect the total number of domestic violence victims, as many were continuing to struggle against isolation and other impacts of COVID-19. And whereas, we are the governing body of Salina, recognize that domestic violence is inconsistent with our city's values and cannot be ignored, excused, and/or tolerated. Whereas, in declaring this month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we encourage all citizens to know the facts about domestic violence, to familiarize themselves with resources to recognize subtle signs of control tactics, to act as safe support systems, to speak up against perpetrators of violence and any messages that inadvertently condone domestic violence, to get involved, to teach others, and to prepare future generations for healthy relationships, and to donate time and resources to their local domestic violence agency. And we're asking today, Mayor, that you and the Commissioners declare October 23rd as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. Do you have any special events scheduled during the month of October?
Yes, we do. We have a candlelight vigil, which we'll be having this evening at 8 o'clock at Kansas Wesleyan University. We'll be having trivia night every Thursday night from 6:30 to 8 at the District Eaton Play. We'll be doing a book read at the Red Fern on the 18th at 5:30 PM. We'll have another candlelight vigil for survivors at our business office on the 17th from 5:30 to 7:00. The steeple light, we'll be turning their lights purple for two weeks, starting the 15th of this month. And we'll be doing glow yoga on Kansas Wesleyan and Kansas, K-State and Kansas Wesleyan University campuses. And we are all, also doing a pet costume competition, because it's statistically proven that 50% of the survivors that have emotional support animals do not leave that abusive situation because they have nowhere to identify to go, and they don't want to leave their pets. So we have a pet-friendly safe shelter, and we have a pet costume contest. This will be the second year where they can dress their pet up and submit photos, and they can enter one of three content, one of three categories, be it Purple Pride, Crowd Favorite, or Best Costume.
Okay, you have a lot planned, so to, to follow up, Ms. Price made the comment that not only October, but every month should, you should be concerned about bullying prevention. I believe the same thing stands for, is the same for domestic violence, that we should not let just one month speak to, to the concern we have. In my, in a perfect world, we would not need D-VAC, but thank you for the work that you guys do. We appreciate it, and I have a proclamation for you. Okay, I believe that's all we have for proclamations. We have no public hearings today. That will lead us to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of the meeting of September 25th, 2023. Item 5.2, approve Resolution Number 23-8152, appointing members to the Animal Control Advisory and Appeals Board and the Business Improvement District Number One Design Review Board. And item 5.3, approve Resolution Number 23-8153, appointing members of the Planning Commission to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Heritage Commission.
Okay, thank you. Is there an item that a Commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, I will accept a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Those items pass 5-0. That will lead us to administration.
Item 6.1, approve ordinance Number 23-11174 on second reading, changing the zoning district classification from PC 2 to R 2 on five lots located on the east side of South Ohio Street, south of Shoreline Drive. The subject property is legally described as lots 1 through 5, Block 6 of the Stone Lake addition to the City of Salina, Celine County, Kansas, and addressed as 2835 through 2915 South Ohio Street.
Okay, again, due to a conflict with my business, I will be recusing myself from item 6.1 and 6.2 and turn it over to Vice Mayor Longbine. Thank you.
Ordinance Number 23-111174 was passed on September 25th, 2023. Since that time, no comments have been received. Any Commissioners have any comments? Questions? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
We need a motion first?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance Number 23-11174 on second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 23-11174 on second reading. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Longbine?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. That'll lead us to item 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve ordinance Number 23-11176 on second reading, ordering the vacation of a portion of a 55-foot-wide platted drainage easement located on lots 18 and 19, Block 4 of the Stone Lake addition to the City of Salina, Celine County, Kansas, to reduce the easement width from 55 feet to 20 feet in order to convert it from surface drainage to a storm drainage pipeline.
Thank you. Background, ordinance Number 23-11176 was passed on September 25th. Since that time, no comments have been received. Any questions or comments from Commissioners?
No questions.
No. Comments from the public? Bring it back for motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that this Commission approve ordinance Number 23-11176 on the second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 23-11176 on second reading. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Longbine?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. We'll welcome Mayor Hoppick back.
Okay, thank you. That will lead us to item 6.3.
Item 6.3, approve ordinance Number 23-11175 on second reading, amending the zoning regulations applicable to group daycare homes.
Okay, ordinance Number 23-11175 was passed on September 25th, 2023, on first reading. Since that time, no comments have been received. The title of the ordinance has been modified to include an introductory statement of the overall subject of the ordinance and to correct certain non-substantive details included in the references to the specifically amended sections of the Salina Code. Are there any questions or comments from the Commission?
No questions.
Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mayor, move we approve ordinance Number 23-11175 on second reading?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 23-11175 on second reading, eliminating group daycare homes from the list of conditional uses allowed in residential zoning districts, adding group daycare homes to the list of permitted home occupations, and adopting the Kansas Department of Health and Environment's current terms and definitions. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That item passes 5-0. That will lead us to item 6.4.
Item 6.4, Special Event Permit Fees Review. 6.4A, approve ordinance Number 23-11177 on first reading, amending the City of Salina Municipal Code Section 6-333, 6-361, and 6-379 to define parades and rolling parades. Identify the permit level applicable to block parties and rolling parades. Establish how an event is determined to be a rolling parade, and repealing the existing sections. And then, item 6.4B will be approve Resolution Number 23-8155, amending the special event fees pursuant to Chapter 6, Article 5 of the City of Salina Municipal Code.
Thank you. We show that Ms. Driscoll will be doing this, but she is out of town, so I'm going to turn to the City Manager, Mike Scrag.
Yep, I, I will take the handoff, Mayor, and have some staff here that I'll draw in as needed for any additional information. So, we're kind of picking up where you left off last Monday, and I'll give, for your benefit as well as those in attendance, give you a little bit more detailed background. This is something that's been a topic for the city for, for quite some time. You may recall that Lauren Driscoll referred to this as being in the too-hard pile for quite some time. To her credit, it was in the too-hard pile until she got here. She picked it up off the too-hard pile and worked it through to, to get us to where we are. So, it's been something that's been a longstanding challenger for the organization. Previously, we had no real specific code provisions, no fees, no structure. We had a lot of ancillary odds and ends in different code sections, and we just kind of treated special events by trying to articulate a long list of questions to try to tease out information about an event and what might be needed. And that then overlapped various departments, overlapped different code provisions, sprinkled throughout the code. And I guess in, in proof of the fact that it was pretty difficult, we started these conversations back in December of 2018 at a City Commission study session, where at that time, the conversation was focused more on responding to the recent redevelopment of the downtown and the interest of, of activities in the downtown. And so, the conversation was about the formation of a Arts, Commerce, and Entertainment District that we've since given the acronym ACE District. But then there's also a recognition for some structure and, and order beyond that. In March of 2019, there's a group of 35 stakeholders from 20 or more organizations that started meeting on a, on a regular basis, nearly once every two weeks for a year, to look at primarily the ACE topic, but it became clear that special events in general, beyond just the downtown district, overlapped a lot of those conversations and, and the solutions that were being identified. And so, things that came out of that group as a recommendation were improved permitting, a set of clear regulations, something that was scalable, by that meaning that depending on the size of the event, the attendance of the event, different levels of permitting and requirements and fees. And then on December 12th of 2022, you adopted ordinance 22-11141 and a corresponding resolution as well, that, that adopted those, those regulations and also set those fees. The resolution amended the comprehensive fee schedule. I'm sure you're familiar with that, but that's where we set all of our different fees. There's a whole longer list of different fees that, that it adopts annually and that you take a look at as part of the budget process. So, at that time, as a governing body, you made it clear that you wanted to take a look at that and, and have staff report back once we've implemented it, to see how that was going and whether it needed revision. And so, frankly, some of you asked fairly frequently, when are we going to have that report? And, and staff indicated we wanted to get through the summer season and, and bring that to you in the fall. So, last Monday was the report-out and study session after less than, than a year's time of, of being in effect. We came away from that conversation with feedback about lowering the fees and, and making some possible changes, most specifically as related to block parties. And then, in the intervening time, rolling parades was something that was added to what's being proposed to you today, and, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. So the current recommendation, what's been prepared and is before you, is a 50% reduction in fees, essentially across the board. As you know, there, there's a two-part fee approach in, in the structure that we have, an application fee, and then assuming that it proceeds to turning into an event and a permit is issued, then a permit fee. The permit fee is after the application's approved, and it's structured to be based on the level of services needed and provided, and it, it has been typically based on attendance, mostly, in terms of kind of that complexity. As, as I'm sure you're aware, there's some provisions as it relates to marathons in particular, and certain parade events and things that, that are, get a little bit more complicated. We discussed it last Monday, and I'll just reiterate the point, but we never really went into this with the expectation that it was going to recover costs. That's not the case. It's just not practical when you start factoring in staff time and overtime and resources. And so, whether it's the current fee structure or a lesser fee structure, the goal is not cost recovery. I would tell you, as, as we've discussed in strategic planning and otherwise, sometimes we find ourselves writing code to try to address the scenarios that play themselves out that we're, we're essentially trying to prevent. As it relates to special events, kind of our most prominent issues that can be challenging are last-minute requests, things that come in even up to the day of the event, and then events that maybe, and there isn't a lot of detail and not a lot of planning in advance and make it difficult to get a sense of the event and be able to be responsive to the event. Overly large expectations of, of the services that the city might provide, whether that's just kind of overstating what we might be able to do, or it could be, for lack of clarity about what their event might be, just asking for one of everything, and, and we'll sort it out later. And then I mentioned the day of, and that's not just a, a follow-up item. We've had things that didn't get planned and had calls to the police department the day of the event needing police to respond to a parade when we didn't see it coming. The other scenario is events being canceled, but they forget to tell us they canceled the event. So, the structure that we're trying to, to provide for is early communication, trying to encourage, you know, reaching out to us and making application far enough in advance that it's reasonable that we can respond. And then, we're also trying to kind of learn... And then, we're also trying to kind of learn from our experiences across different events. These are the kind of things that we get asked for. Have you thought about that? Or this sometimes means that you also need that. Have you thought about that? So, we've tried to add some structure to help an event planner see those things coming and help that dialogue. So, we prepared for you a revised fee table that's attached, and that then involves two different actions. One is the proposed amendments to Chapter 6 that are more on the basis of kind of the definitions of a rolling parade and some of those events, as well as updating the definition of block parties. Essentially, a rolling parade is something that we've found to be helpful if it's effective, if it's appropriate for the event, and we don't have to have street barricades, we don't have to make arrangements in advance to get cars off the street and try to coordinate advance notice to residents in the downtown, as an example, to be aware of the event if it can just, well, number one, if it can be an event that just follows traffic laws, that's the preferred approach from staff's perspective. It's the minimum impact. Behind that, then, is what we're calling a rolling parade, and what we propose to be defined as a rolling parade, that rather than blocking the streets, it's just a police escort. And so, recognizing that that requires less resources, that's a new category that's been added. And then, the other action item is the resolution to amend the fees and the fee structure that's in the comprehensive fee schedule. With respect to fiscal note, fiscal impacts, there really is no impact for this. As I mentioned earlier, the goal is not to try to recover costs, so obviously, the fees go down, that's less revenue, but that's not really the intent. Some of you have mentioned to me the possibility of refunding fees that were previously paid. That's something that certainly within your purview, if you wanted to do. We can make that happen from staff's perspective, both just from a practical procedural standpoint and financially. I think we estimated the total revenue in these 67 events that have occurred to be in the $23,000, $26,000 range. So, a refund would essentially be half of that across those organizations. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have about the specifics. If you go to the table that's attached, it talks about permit levels 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. A lot of those are based on anticipated attendance. So, essentially, progressing through 1, 2, and 3, that's 0 to 250, 251 to 500, 501 to 1,000. The advanced level permit is 1,000 attendees or more. And then, advanced level 4, we've spent a lot of time working with different events, trying to create some race routes that we know we've troubleshoot and can have some confidence in in terms of traffic disruption and the impacts on neighborhoods and where volunteers and traffic control was needed. I would tell you, the marathon has been great to work with. It's continuing to grow, but there were certainly some lessons learned on putting that route together despite the hours of time invested in that. So, we continue to tweak that marathon route. But, again, the goal is to try to perfect those rather than create custom routes for multiple events year after year. If there's any way to standardize and kind of troubleshoot and learn from one year to the next, we're trying to encourage that by way of the process and the permit levels. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I think we might as well address the elephant in the room. There's no sense dancing around it in case anybody... I'm guessing you guys aren't here about ballpark fees or anything like that. So, could you give us an update on how the application was filled out compared to actual what services were needed, and explain with the rolling parade how that works and what those fees will be?
Right.
I think we can answer a lot of questions, hopefully, by discussing that now.
And I don't know that I can speak specifically to how the permit was filled out, but what I do know is, we had the study session on Monday. I believe Wednesday, staff was contacted about the toy run and its permit. I think there were about four conversations with one particular staff member who frankly didn't have the authority to, you know, make a lot of determinations as it relates to where this conversation might be going today, or how that might be able to be integrated into this conversation. So, the conversation was that Lauren Driscoll wasn't available. She, as you know, we have DRT meetings on Wednesdays that book up our days. And so, the intent was to try to take that conversation up on Thursday. I think the social media conversation got ahead of that. So, we then followed up, we had conversations with staff about, okay, what is their event? What category classification did it get put in? And that was kind of on that number, size, and customized route basis, who was the justification for it being in a higher permit level. There was conversation about, there's a no-cost approach of obeying traffic laws. There was some conversation about a lower-cost approach with one of the predetermined routes, but that didn't correspond to their route that they prefer and the route they've used for years. And so, by the time we were able to get in contact, we indicated that we were headed down the path of proposing a rolling parade approach at a much lesser permit fee, and that seemed to be acceptable to Jimmy. I've not met Jimmy, but we spoke on the phone. So, I think we reached, I think that was much more palatable than where the conversation started. We were able to get that worked out the following day, and that's reflected in what's before you right now.
And could you tell us what those fees are for the rolling parade?
Sure. It's...
Just to put it on public record?
Yeah. So, if you go back to that table that I was referring to, it is in the permit level 1, city services required block parties and/or rolling parades, a $50 application fee and a $50 permit fee for a total cost of $100.
Okay, thank you. Before I open it up to the other commissioners for comments, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make, and then we'll also open it up to the public. This was brought to our attention Thursday morning, and I think I'd called Jimmy by 10, 10 or 11 o'clock that day, to kind of find out how the actual toy run was handled, because to be honest with you, I've seen the pictures of the toy run on the front page of the newspaper for years, and I was under the impression that it was just a drive around town without any kind of police escort or anything. So, needed to find those things out. It does appear that our application form is fairly detailed, and depending on how you answer that, I believe we immediately jumped to one of the higher charges that could actually be there. So, we had had a meeting last Monday to discuss this, so we were kind of in the middle of this, so we were able to address the rolling parade, as we call it, and get those fees down to $100. And so, I appreciate staff, again, they were working on that, being able to get to that point. I guess one of the comments I want to make to the public is, if we have a problem in the community, you know, contact staff or contact a commissioner and give us time to respond. I mean, we are not the enemy. We all have the same goals, and the toy run's one of them. My family, and I'm guessing some other commissioners up here, we support Ashby-Hall and D-VAC financially. We believe they're very important parts of our community. I can't fix something if I don't know it's broken. So, again, I appreciate the passion that the group has for this. I think that's, it is a well... Ashby and them are well-receiving of the toys, and it's an important part to those kids, mainly those that are not at a, that are homeless at the time. I do want to, I do agree, my commissioner, or Mike Skrag and I have talked about refunding prior events, refunding half of, you know, refunding back down to the level of the new fee structure since we've done this. So, if other commissioners agree, we get to that point, it'd be not, you know, we could add that to our motion. So, those are my comments at this point. Just in case everyone wants to know, I pulled our, this is a comprehensive fee schedule that we have as a city. And part of the reason we have fees is we charge a fee to the individuals that are using, you know, parks, or their, you know, whether it's Parks and Rec, Public Works, Development Services, Arts and Humanities, to help kind of give some of that, you know, to have some skin in the game is a good way to put it. We never recoup all the costs on some of those, but if we didn't have those fees, all those expenses would fall back on the general tax base. So, it's just a way for us to kind of keep that in check. So, I will turn it over to the other commissioners for comments. Usually, I wait until after they've spoken, but I just wanted to get out in front of this. So, I'll look to my left.
Well, Mayor, your points are well-taken. I think you've laid that out very effectively for us, for the, as a policy decision, we've got to make a decision between what of the public accommodations we are willing to compromise on a special request for a worthy request. And our duty is to the taxpayers and the voters, and quite frankly, 70% of our budget goes to staffing issues. So, when we only have fee structures and a sales tax and a property tax with which to fund things, when we give things away, then there's a reciprocal cost to that. There's no free lunch. So, but we, as the mayor's pointed out, there's no intent to try to recover even a substantial part of the cost. It's just a matter of everyone having some skin in the game. I appreciate the work that the staff has done on this. We've been very progressive, I think, as a commission, to try and look forward and try to anticipate the difficulties that our administrative efforts make and to make our community more efficient. And this was one effort that, you know, I'm really glad that Ms. Driscoll was willing to pick up, because I don't think anybody really understood how much staff time goes into any given request. I mean, it touches, an item, a request can touch three departments, it can touch 13 departments. So, there's a great deal of both administrative purview that goes into it, and then individual departments that also have to come in on any kind of a request. So, I'm very pleased about the way staff has brought this forward in the last year, the compromise that's been offered here. And I also think that we should refund the folks that have paid at the different level of, throughout the course of the year here, as we've used this. I think we should pack those fees up and refund them if we pass this, so.
Commissioner Davis?
I won't try to add to those two very eloquent summations. I just have two specific questions. For the rolling parade, is the length of the parade a factor? And the only reason I ask, a parade of 10 vehicles, probably one police officer could handle. A parade of 500 vehicles will take several more officers, because streets are temporarily, it's like a funeral procession. You know, if you're on the cross street, that's going to be a real long red light. And question number two, if there is a motion to refund fees from the early stage of the, I would request that be a separate motion, because I initiated a permit request for one of those, so it would probably be a conflict of interest, so I'd have to recuse myself from that vote.
My mic is on. So, with respect to the length of the parade, the honest answer is, we talked about that, but part of, as we try to build this structure, we struggle to define those levels. In fact, that's kind of what got us in the conversation we were having about the toy parade and the need for rolling parades in the first place. So, in all honesty, we just chose not to try to stratify it any further. In part, you're dependent on the applicant even correctly anticipating, and it would have to be some arbitrary breakpoint somewhere along the line.
Sounds good. Thank you. I would encourage people to go back to last Monday's study session. What date was that, September 25th?
Fifth.
Yeah. On the city's website or on YouTube, to get a little better understanding of where these fees came from and why they implemented it. To hear, you need to understand both sides, that city staff does have a lot of things to do to organize and coordinate services. And a big part of this fee schedule was late fees to encourage people to apply early rather than a week before. And I think with this instance, we're discussing that the late fees came into play, and the other side of that is the investment, the buy-in, to where you have something invested in the event, to where when staff contacts you the week before, and they say, oh, we changed our mind, we're not having it.
I generally try not to correct commissioners, but I do, for the record, want to say they, I think they were early in terms of, they were on time in terms of reaching out to us as far as the event. I believe it's in November.
Okay. But...
But late fees were a big focus of our concern.
It was.
And it is a policy.
And back in December, we should have looked at both sides of this a little more, you know, and we didn't, and, you know, that's on us. So, I'm just happy that we've worked out a solution, getting the fees back to within reason, and I too am for refunding any past events.
Commissioner Lindquist? I'll keep it as short as I can. I don't want to reiterate everything that everybody else said, but basically, I am for refunding those previous permitting fees. I think one thing worth mentioning is that anything this complex, the first iteration of it, first version of it, is not always going to be perfect. It's going to take fine tuning, and part of that is feedback. And with feedback in mind, I appreciate everybody coming out here and actually coming in here to look at us and say, hey, this is the problem. And I can make eye contact with everybody versus just the barrage of keyboard commando stuff that kind of happened the day this kind of, you know, kind of hit the fan, so to speak. But, you know, we're, despite some of the comments that were made, we like Christmas, we like kids, we like, you know. Drive by my house at Christmas, you'll see. But, it's the fact that you're coming here to voice your opinion and talk to us in person is greatly appreciated, at least for me, and I'm sure the other commissioners as well. And just bear with us, you know, if there's a kink in the works, we'll try and work through it and be reasonable about it. And I do stand by the, that little bit of a financial barrier, and unfortunately, that is there because there have been people in the past that kind of ruin it for everyone else. You know, perfect world, it's all free, you're taxpayers, and it's all taken care of, but human nature, people do take advantage of situations and abuse the system. So, here we are with some kind of financial barrier, just so everybody has skin in the game, so to speak, and that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. One thing to follow up, yeah, I think what Commissioner Lindquist says, you know, the first draft, this is the second draft of the fee schedule. It may not be the last. We may find that we have other tweaking to do to it. The application itself may need tweaked also, so we'll continue to work on those. As a city and a city commission, we're not perfect, never will be, but please, you know, contact us if you have concerns. So, with that, we will open it up to the public for comments. Jimmy, you better, yeah, you're in the front row.
The toy run's been going on for 37...
I'm sorry, could you give us your name and where you're from?
James Creepway, Salina, Kansas. The toy run's been going on for 37 years. The Gold Eagles started it, and after a while, they were getting older and some dying off. And I heard that they're concerned about taking, somebody taking it over, so I did. I've been doing it over 20-some years, and every time I go online, get the parade permit, $35. So, when I couldn't find it, I called the city, and they said, we'll go to here. And I'm not really computer savvy a lot, and I had some hard time, and then all of a sudden, down at the bottom, said $500, and it freaked me out. So, I called them back up, and yeah, they said, wait till, you know, we'll get somebody high up to talk, you know, get with you tomorrow. And I went home, told my wife about it, and I was just trying to let friends know what I was up against, and I didn't know it was going to explode, but it did. But, you know, it's for disadvantaged kids, and you all know that, and it's just for the kids. It brings the community together. Bikers spend a lot of money in this town, and a lot of, okay, motorcycle enthusiasts come in from out of town. come in from out of town. Yeah, I, you know, they come in from out of town to do this. You know, Wichita has thirty-five hundred motorcycles, you know? Last year, we had three hundred motorcycles, you know? You know, gas, toys, food, they bring money to this town. Um, when I'm, when I seen the fees, I go, it's outrageous. So, and then several years, the police asked us on the parade permit, one year was fourteen, we need fourteen volunteers, and we blocked off all the side roads, so we didn't need any barrier, any barricades or anything like that. So, you know, we help out this line, uh, police department, and, uh, they've been very good for us the last, you know, twenty-seven years is all I've been, you know, or twenty-plus years. So, when, um, I was just wanting to lower the price, you know, and everything else, you know, churches, you know, they have things, they can't afford it, they can't afford the fees. So, they just, you know, we ju, I just wanted everybody to take a look at everything, you know? And, uh, that's all I got to say. One more thing, close your eyes. Close your eyes.
You're not going to throw something at us, are you?
No.
Okay. I've got to keep mine open just a little bit.
Close your eyes. Remember Christmas morning when you were a kid and you were opening your presents? The joy? Well, we're part of that for Ashby House and D-VAC. Okay, you can open your eyes now. So, that's all I got to say. I'm sorry, I got some people really flustered, you know, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, and, and thanks for what you do, and I'm glad we were able to come to, to something we could all live with. Thank you, Jimmy. Yeah. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to?
Hello, my name is Susan Leach, uh, from Salina, Kansas. At first, I thought I was going to come here and have to, um, plead with you guys to be supportive of us, but, um, I'm still going to tell you a little bit about what I wanted to share with you. I come before you today, um, to thank you now for taking great pause and reconsidering the requirements and costs for charity events such as the annual toy run. It's no surprise that the community is abuzz with many individuals within our community and the surrounding areas having very strong feelings on this matter. I want to take a moment to let you know, the annual toy run is the event that was the catalyst for this conversation, and it is much more than collecting toys for kids. For the past several decades, the toy run has benefited Ashby House and D-VAC, and I've been fortunate enough to assist with the event for the past seven, or, sorry, the past twelve years as D-VAC staff. For the past twelve years, I have witnessed the outpouring of support and the generosity of our community, but most importantly, I have witnessed firsthand the impact of this event. These toys are so much more than presents under a Christmas tree, something most of us in this room take for granted. These toys are instrumental in assisting victims of domestic and sexual violence with coping, healing, and moving towards a violence-free life. Every year, D-VAC is able to provide hundreds of households comfort, hope, support, and healing because of our, um, the bikers and their generosity. Motorcycle enthusiasts. As I said, um, these items are so much more than presents underneath a tree. Yes, we assist parents with presents at Christmas for their children. Why? Because no protective parent should have to choose between purchasing gifts or saving funds to flee abuse or maintaining a violence-free life. The impact doesn't end there. The toys this event generates allows us at D-VAC the ability to give a child who just witnessed their parent being strangled and is now entering shelter, a teddy bear. A teddy bear they can hold, squeeze, cry to, whisper their worries and their fears to until they're comfortable to speak to others. You would be horrified and astonished if you knew the stories that these toys have heard. This event allows us the ability to provide Maria Barbie's, her favorite toy she had to leave behind when her family fled abuse. To provide James some toy cars to replace the one his mom's boyfriend stomped and broke as a tactic of abuse. To provide Jacob and Eva a board game to play with their mom to rebuild the parent-child relationship damaged by the abuse they endured. When a child has a birthday, this event allows us to assist Tommy's mom with birthday presents because, as I mentioned, a mother shouldn't have to choose between saving funds to flee or showing Tommy he is loved and to celebrate his special day. When a child is invited to a birthday party, this event allows us to provide a gift for Ashley, so, to provide Ashley a gift for her friend so Ashley can be included and have some normalcy. Although we at D-VAC knew the generosity didn't end at Christmas, many in our community and the motorcycle enthusiasts participating in this event have never actually known the life-changing impact it truly has. So, it may be a little premature. Um, it sounds like it's going to move in the direction everybody was wanting, but I wanted to tell you, um, on behalf of myself, um, I'm sure on behalf of D-VAC staff, thank you again for taking a pause, reconsidering this, and making it allowable and continue in our community.
But before you sit down, you want some free advertising? You want to tell us about Festival of Trees and what day that is?
Absolutely. Uh, the Festival of Trees is always the Friday before Thanksgiving. It's a very busy, uh, weekend for us at D-VAC. So, Friday, we have the Festival of Trees, Saturday is Parade of Lights, and then the follow, the next day, Sunday, is the Toy Run. So, we have limited seats and invites are on their way out in the mail right now.
Another way to support D-VAC and their, their mission, okay?
Yeah, and we'll see you there again.
Yes, you will.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the?
Carl Garten, one sixteen Aspen, Salina, Kansas. Um, here representing the Tri-Rivers Fair as president and also the Chamber of Commerce Ag Committee, who puts on the farm show. Uh, those two events, uh, fair cost us about three thousand dollars in permits for the parade, closing the street, and a few things. Farm show was a little over seven hundred, and so those were the two that were there. I did send an email to all of you. Did any of you get that? Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll comment on Commissioner Longbine's, uh, comment last week when I was here about the website. I tried in the search engine, fairs, festivals, parades, what other words did I use? Anyway, didn't take me anywhere, I'm sorry. So, you might check on your website on how to get there, and then, uh...
That's a new work in progress, too. We just implemented that.
And then when I clicked on the fact to send these guys an email, it brought up their deal, and I typed it in, and I wondered whether it went or not, but I did send it out to all of them, so I don't know where it ended up, but anyway.
We do have certain people blocks.
I, I understand, I understand. Uh, my comments were, you know, nonprofit groups, um, lowering the rate, which was one of them. Uh, the fact that maybe Bob Flaherty Drive shouldn't be a cost to close it because it's part, in order to use those two facilities, which one's a city and one's a county, it has to be closed down for safety purposes. And the other fact that I even visited with a couple of you last week about is the barricades, if we're going to have the public putting those up and everything, they ought to be at least usable. The ones at T-Pac are crap, okay? So, uh, every one of them they had was broke. I actually put them together with zip ties, a couple of them, and, uh, so that would be something the city needs to address, so.
We'll look into that. I don't know if those are ours or theirs, so.
Good question.
I'm not going to throw anybody into the bus just yet.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Um, just to also, um, I'm going to look at, uh, the city manager. Um, you talked about the fair. Um, I know it was brought up whether, like, the, uh, uh, River Festival or the, uh, what was, what did we just have last week?
The street fair.
Street fair, whether those, even though those are city events, are they, do they go through the same process?
They do. As odd as it sounds, uh, we actually transfer those funds. We, you would be surprised how many times the question of, should the city pay its own fees comes up, and we, recognizing sometimes it's between different funds and enterprise funds, we typically, uh, just go ahead and make that transfer. And that is definitely the case with the River Festival and Street Fair.
Okay, anyone else?
Hi, Patrick Parker, Director of Operations for Ashby House, and I just wanted to talk in support of Jimmy and everybody that's involved in the toy run. It doesn't only support just the clients that D-VAC and Ashby House has, um, but it, it, it helps the whole city. So, we're like a distribution center for these toys, so all throughout the year, not just Christmas, it's going to help a family who's less fortunate to get these gifts for, for their children. I don't have a really long elegant thing to say, I just wanted to add that to what, what all has already been said. And thank you all for coming to a solution.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. I think there was someone else there. I saw somebody else stand up, you hit me.
Carrie Gillis. Um, I've been in this city for approximately ten years or so. Um, previously, that, pretty much the rest of my life, I lived up in McPherson, um, was, you know, somewhat active in the community and stuff. Um, your fees for stuff like this, you should get rid of them. Um, McPherson, we didn't do that. Um, we tried to promote the city, which is what this stuff does. It promotes the city, it helps the city. Um, you know, we've got, we've got our May Day Parade, we've got, um, fireworks on the Fourth of July, which was a group that I was with, we did that. And actually, for a while, the city, um, contributed money. Um, they gave us a couple of years' notice that they weren't going to be able to fund that anymore, so that gave us time to go out and, um, raise some donors and stuff. But, um, we did bicycle rodeos and never, never did we have fees for any of that. Um, you guys have fees for other parts, building permits and stuff like that, but when it comes to stuff that builds your community, you need to get a vo, get away from those fees on the parades. Um, now, stuff like, people coming in at the last minute, I would be questioning if they're, it's going to be a legitimate stuff. Uh, most of the stuff that we did, we planned for months in advance for it. We talked to the city about it beforehand because we knew we would need those permits and stuff, or the, the help from the city. And the city would come up, I mean, they would go backwards to help us. Um, I hope that you guys can realize that, that, you know, you, this stuff does build money. And you don't need to raise extra little revenue from that, and that's what tax dollars are for. And all these things bring stuff to your city to help bring more tax dollars. Um, you're just going to be getting more people upset and stuff, so, um, I really wish you guys would think about that stuff on all of your fees, on this stuff. I do, I do agree with people coming in at the last minute, you got to question if that event's going to happen. But otherwise, if you got organizations that have been planning for years doing stuff, there should be no fees. The city should be jumping backwards to help do what they need to do because it's going to help your city more than charging a few dollars. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I'm Dan Mojo from Salina. Um, I've been beside Jimmy here for thirty years, going to these fundraisers. Um, we go to Wichita, we go to Junction City, we probably go, I don't know, ten or twelve other cities to do the same thing there, and they come back and pay us back. We have friends there that come from Wichita, Junction City. There's sixty, seventy towns around here that do the same thing we do. They don't charge fees. They come to this town, they dump over a hundred dollars a day, they come in here. So, it's, it's benefiting the town, it's, it's for a benefit, to raise funds, and it's the same thing for the church organizations that, that support us, that give us a place to hold the facility, hold the action. Uh, we support them, they support us. Um, that's the way it happens in the other towns, and they're not charging fees. It's the same situation when you got, uh, the car events that's affiliated with, with the churches, bringing benefits to them. Uh, it's not just a parade, if it's a block, block party or anything, you know, where you've got a big group, um, everybody comes to help each other out. So, there shouldn't be any reason for, 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 uh, permits, charging fees for permits. The other towns don't do it, and everybody helps each other out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, John Blanchard, Salina. Um, I watched the study session last week, and so these, these comments pertain to that and then also what's on your agenda today that you're going to take action on. First of all, you know, nobody expects that there, there shouldn't be any cost because there, there is staff time involved in some of this, so, but it ought to be very minimal. Um, have you considered, rather, to cut the fees, just say, we're just going to cut them in half? Seems a bit arbitrary based on all the comments made about all the effort over four years that was gone into make, figuring out what these fees should be. Um, I would hope that you might consider a cost recovery model similar to what the Parks and Rec implements, where they have a pyramid and the things that give the most, uh, use to the most citizens, um, you're not so concerned about the cost recovery. Second thing, uh, one of the other things you talked about in that, uh, in that study session were the wage fees. And as it turns out, you waived, the only person that got a fee waiver was JRI, twenty-five hundred dollars for Skyfire. It seems like that was probably a marketing thing for his business, and I don't know why the city would waive that fee when they're willing to, to charge everybody else in town that wants to do a block party or anything else, why they would charge him. I think it sets a bad precedent when you give a waiver to the richest guy in town and make all the working-class people pay for it. Second thing, another thing about waived fees is, is that you guys all waived a hundred and five thousand dollars in building permit fees for a project that you continually recuse yourself from and that you do title work for out on. So, I think when you give a hundred and five thousand dollars in fee waivers for building permits, I think you can really look at what you're willing to lower permit fees for these. Now, that a hundred and five thousand dollars, that doesn't even count the probably three hundred thousand dollars that you've waived for that aeroplane subdivision. So, it seems like if you're wealthy and well-connected, you get a fee waiver, but if you're a working-class person, you know what? You really don't need a block party. Um, rolling parades, also in the, uh, Lauren Driscoll in her presentation said, rolling parades are free. They have pre-described routes for parades and for races. Well, it sounds like they've been doing this event for twenty-seven years. One of the things that Lauren Driscoll said is, we brought in all these people that have run all these events over the past several years, River Festival people, Feast on the Fay, all these other people that have done these events. Did she bring in anybody from the Toys for Tots race? I think they've been doing that mostly, if it's twenty-seven years, probably like, mostly the same route. But it seems like we bend over backwards to not only accommodate and include the people to make the rules that are part of our inner circle, and we leave the working-class people out in the cold. One recommendation I would make is get rid of the fees for block parties. I don't think there ought to be a difference for, uh, industrial areas, they're actually safer to have a block party on. I don't think you should have, should have that. People that are in that industrial park for Tom Hessener's block party are going there for that reason on that day. There's no business being transacted. I hope that you will eliminate those fees because they are low-traffic areas. But I appreciate you doing that. One last thing I want to mention is I came here about three and a half months ago, or three months ago, asking that you, uh, refund the Juneteenth Committee's two thousand five hundred dollar fee. I thought it was a little outrageous. You ignored me, you said you'd get back to citizens when they contact you guys. I came to the meeting, nobody ever got back with me. So, I hope that if, if Dr. Davis recuses himself, I hope that you will still give them a full recover, a, a full refund. I hope that you'll, you'll make the rolling parade, like Lauren Driscoll said, zero dollars, not a hundred, and, uh, let people out of the block parties. Thank you.
Thank you.
I came for you guys last week and gave you two suggestions that Thursday night cruisers, uh, knew of that were nixed because of, of these astronomical fees. I too agree with these gentlemen that any type of event that's been, uh, in this town for a lot of years brings a lot of money to this town, and they shouldn't have any fees at all. Uh, that would include block parties, too. Um, if you guys want to be known for taking away neighborhood services and neighborhood get-togethers for families of small communities that want to get together with their friends, their family, and enjoy an event, and, and they're having to pay for it, uh, even if it's... family, and enjoy an event, and they're having to pay for it, even if it's, if it's $100 now because you take 50% of that, a block party was 200 on the new fee schedule, then, to me, that, that's just not, that's just not right. I thank God that Thursday Night Cruisers doesn't have to have any of these services or pay any of these fees because we are not a rolling parade. We basically are cars that go through all of the traffic lights, traffic control, and obey the traffic laws to where we don't need city services, barricades, or the police to tell us and how, where to go. We have no direct route. So when you touch base, though, about the question, and I get this all the time, people asking me if the River Festival had waived fees. And I thought they did, and now I find out they don't, that they're charged $2,500. Because not only did I hear it from you just now, but Lauren Driscoll called me last Friday, and after an hour and a half conversation, she basically said that, yeah, they are charged. But a note on that to have out there for the public to know, that $2,500 for them to be taken back and give back to the city is nothing because they got $600,000 taken out of the general fund to go towards the River Festival every year anyway. So giving that money back is nothing. With my conversation of Lauren, it kind of puts you guys on the spot to a point where I don't know if you guys can really take full control or full of everything that happened, that it's your fault. Because I was here back in December when you guys approved this, and what she did was basically started out with the fact that all the departments were losing money. And ching, 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 for you guys, losing money in the city is a red flag, and let's do something about it. What she didn't do was she didn't tell you what fees were in 2022 versus 2023. If she would have told you that a parade was $35 and it's going up to 600, I don't think you guys would have voted on that. I really don't. I think you would have said, whoa, 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 wait a minute. That's a lot of percentage going up. So not all of it's on you. A lot of it is on her, and I told her that. Of course, she doesn't want to take credit for it, and that's fine. But that being said, you need to start nixing fees for, for organizations that have been here for quite a while. And that includes the River Festival, that's fine. But any big organization or anything that brings a lot of money to this town, or even just a little bit, shouldn't have to pay anything upfront. That's, as Bill Longbine said before, and he kind of changed his tune a little bit today, that's double-dipping out of taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Interrupt. Brad, Brad, could you go turn the air conditioner back up?
Thank you.
Norman Mantle, Salina. It's 2023. It's not like it used to be. Liability issues, you're going to be in trouble. I go to fish and game meetings every other month. I've done it for two years. They are in a big lawsuit for providing these services. They've had to hire an attorney outside of the state organization. They won't tell me anymore what they're being sued over. But you're looking at a liability issue. So you're going to have to raise your liability insurance. It's 2023.
Okay, anyone else?
Hey, guys. Chad Farber, Salina. And I want to reiterate something that somebody else has said just a moment ago. Some of these fees should be, and I would go so far as to say, most, if not all of the fees on your revised fee schedule should be done away with. Commissioner Longbine said it last week. I went back and watched the study session as well because I was getting a lot of questions about what was going on. It's taxing on top of taxing on top of taxing is what's going on. We've killed the block parties. Block parties went from, what, 30 applications down to one over the last year? And that's because people just simply can't afford it. We're killing nonprofit events. I know the city calls these fees, but what it actually is, is a tax. You're taxing us again. And I don't know if you think that we, as the citizens, are not picking up on this, but now you're saying, we're going to slash them in half. That's like a furniture store marking all their prices up 90% and then saying, hey, we're having a 50% off sale. And everybody's like, oh, great, we marked it down to $100. Get rid of these fees for these nonprofit groups. A lot of these groups are bringing in income to the city, and we pay exorbitant amount of taxes in the city already. The city should look at this as an investment opportunity to bring people, to bring funds into the city for each one of these events. They're going to spend money on all kinds of different things, and I think it is, we should look at it as an investment opportunity as opposed to trying to charge extra fees to the citizens that are already here. Mr. Schreger a minute ago said, our goal is not cost recovery. Well, what is the goal with the fees that we are putting out there right now? If we're cutting them in half, we're going from $26,250, which was outlined in last week's study session, down to $13,125? If you look at that against our city budget, which a number in another study session was thrown out, $170 million or something like that, that's such a small percentage of what our city budget is. Is it really worth $13,000 to charge our citizens another fee, especially for nonprofit organizations? If they're certification for nonprofit, let them have their event. Let them help our community out. A $100 fee takes away a lot of toys from our, from our young people and from D-VAC, from Ashby House. And I would love to see, and again, I was expecting this meeting to be a little more aggressive, but I appreciate you starting off the meeting with talking about addressing some of the fees. But I would love to see them not only be slashed in half, but let's reconsider this, guys, and let's take these fees away and allow our city to continue moving forward. We don't need this controversy between you guys and the citizens here. Thank you.
Okay. I got one more.
We all limit you to one. I'm sorry, Jimmy.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'll tell her then.
Because we got.
How y'all doing today? Bruce Boat, I live in Abilene, but I've been, I've known Jimmy for over 50 years. I've been doing this for about 20-some years. We'd like to invite you all to come to this. Show up, ride. You ride in the parade for the River Festival, do you?
Not on a motorcycle. My wife won't lap me.
But I'm just saying, in a car. Come and, come and see what we do. Come and hang out for the morning and see what we do and take, you know, see what it's all about. Meet some of the people, because I come from Abilene. I got friends that come from Hayes and everywhere else to come to this. But please, come. And the fee that you guys are charging, why don't you donate that to us? You know, give that as a donation to, to the toy run. You know, something like that, generate, you know, something like that. You know, it goes to a good cause, especially the Ashby House and all the other organizations, the churches that give out and everything like that. Everybody that comes to this, we donate our time and our money. I come here, we eat supper here. You know, we may eat breakfast, go to dinner, and then come and eat supper somewhere. We, you know, we spend money every day. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pull the mic, pull the microphone down so we can hear you, Brenda.
So the question was that we needed.
Name and location.
Oh, my name. Brenda Crowder, Salina, Kansas. If there is inclement weather for our toy run, we've paid the application fee, we've paid the permit fee, et cetera, will there be another application fee if we have to reapply for a later date for our toy run? How will, have they addressed that issue at all?
I'm going to look at, I'm going to look at city staff.
In particular events, not so much as relates to the fee, as some of the alcohol approvals are needed for some. We've identified a rain date as part of the original approval, so I think we could work with you on that. And recognizing we are not trying to recover costs.
In other words, not, not charge a second application.
To be honest, that's something that we probably need to clarify in the policy. You know, presumably, we've moved all the barricades out. We've done, done all the preparation in advance of the event, and then if it gets rained out, we're doing it a second time. But I think we could clarify that in the policy. And it looks like Brad might have a clarification for me.
Oh, and also, another thing our, our group wanted to make sure, we always welcome the vehicles to follow. It isn't all just limited to motorcycles. Load up your cars and bring some toys. Heck, the more toys, the merrier for us. We love it.
I believe that there's a provision in the application process for groups that have an outdoor event and a possible rain thing to check that box and to specify that date, and that becomes part of the, part of the original application. If it was missed, or they, if somebody doesn't see it on there, they can probably talk to them. But, but there is a provision on there, and there's no additional fees associated with that.
Thank you for the clarification.
We didn't get that far.
If there's no one else, I will bring it back to the commission. It looks like we have a couple of action items here.
Could I just say one, one thing? I don't want you to leave the room thinking that this is a controversy between us and you. This is how the democratic process works. This is how we serve you. I don't think any of us can consider this a controversy at all. It's an issue. And what we're doing is we're talking it out. We're trying to come up with the best solution. So this is not a us against you. I mean, the fact that you're all here, you know, shows that this is an important item. And we don't know everything that's going on. There's too many things going on here. But we get to hear from you, and that's how we get to decide what's best for the city. So we're all on the same side, but on the other hand, we are running a business. The business is known as the City of Salina. So however we decide to do it, we're doing it for all of us. But we don't have any reason to set ourselves up as the chiefs in the council with a moat around us, you know. Whatever we vote for, we, you know, we're subject to as well. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Approve ordinance number 23-11177, amending Salina Code Section 6.333 by defining parade, rolling parade, and amending the definition of block parties, amending section, Salina Code Section 6-361 by identifying the permit level applicable to block parties and rolling parades, amending Salina Code Section 3.379 by establishing how an event is determined to be in a rolling parade and repealing the existing sections.
Do we have a second? Seagull, okay. And I do believe that was Salina Code Section 6-379, I believe you read.
I think the agenda is incorrectly cited as 3.
6, okay. Okay, we have a, and I'm not going to read the whole thing again. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11177. All those in favor?
Well, discussion.
Thought we had discussion. Go ahead.
A motion and a second.
Okay.
I would offer amendment, if there's a second for the amendment, to cut the fees for the block parties to as minimal value as possible, perhaps go for zero, see where it ends up. If there's a second for that. Won't take it personally if it's not.
With that.
What it segues into is I, the gears have been turning a little bit on, maybe even possibly considering, and this is going to open a can of worms, and I'm going to say it anyway, maybe a different pricing structure for charity events. I know I just complicated.
But there's one caveat to that. Just because it's a nonprofit charity event does not mean that a lot of city resources won't be expended.
Agreed.
And, you know, when we're looking at this from the business perspective, it's the city resources. If a large charity event requires, you know, two ambulances, 10 policemen, 20 streets closed, that's no less an impact on, on the city as if it was a for-profit event. I understand what you're saying.
Oh, no, I agree.
It's just some other way we could qualify the event.
You can go both ways with that, that thought process. I mean, because at what point does that thought stop? I mean, if you're en route to said charity event and you're buying gas, you go to the gas pump attendant and go, hey, this is on the house, man, I'm going to a charity event. And, hey, this, this fast food's on the house because I'm, I'm fueling up for a charity event. But I do think, you know, to me, I'm good with this passing with the understanding that, like many things we do, it is up for potentially review and reconsideration, and maybe there's another iteration of this down the road as we get more feedback. And I think what resonates with me is the, basically, if we're bringing people into the community, they're spending money, sales tax, revenue, et cetera. Word of mouth, just general feelings of goodwill, which you can't put a price on. I mean, I know that's kind of, I don't, I don't know. I'm just.
I'll give my two cents, and I think, or in some cases, $100, whatever. Anyway, I'm okay with maybe the block parties. I don't think I want to make a general statement now about nonprofits because you're going to have all others come in. I think we need to review it more because you have individuals or things that bring money into the community that'll say, we're just as important. So I think, I don't, I don't want to just jump in. Again, as I said earlier, the application, I think, needs to be, you know, probably reviewed. And I think, I'd say the second, you know, revision of this may not be the final revision. But I think before we would go into all that, we probably want to have a little more discussion without.
I think I'd agree with that train of thought. I mean, it's going to be hard to distinguish between nonprofits and all the classifications. These good people, they best band together on their own and do this, but the hospital, Tammy Walker, I mean, there are many nonprofit organizations that are better, well-funded and operate much bigger efforts. I guess, to the point of the block parties, I, personally, I think everybody has some skin in the game, so it could be a very minimal fee, but there needs to be some kind of application fee, in my opinion, just to hold everybody honest to the system and make sure that the proper applications and things are done.
I think that's a fair assessment, and I'll share a little personal. I don't know if anybody else has been in a neighborhood where somebody's abused the block party privilege. I did about 20 years ago, and it became kind of a de facto, if this person threw a get-together, shoire, whatever the heck you want to call it, there's a barricade because she can do it. And I'd come home, and it got to the point where it's like, you know, I don't know if it was baby shower or whatever, very, something very arbitrary. And I'm just, as a citizen who pays the roadway as well, I'm thinking, I just want to pull in my driveway and utilize that portion of the roadway. And I think that small financial barrier probably would have created a dynamic where she may not have been so flippant about that privilege, so to speak. Just my two cents. So I do think there needs to be a little bit of a financial, like, again, skin of the game, just, not a lot, but a little bit.
And there is a cost for bringing the barricades out.
Yeah.
Notifying police and fire that the streets closed.
There is.
At $25?
Again, I.
So there's no, no second to my motion.
Okay, yeah.
I think we're in the weeds now.
Yeah, I think we need to, again, we're still going to massage this. It took them quite a while to get to this point. I don't think we need to jump in and try to make multiple changes tonight. I think we do need to think it through a little, a little bit more. So that's my opinion. We jump in now, we may have missed something anyway, so.
That's fair.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second that'll stand without amendment?
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve, I just turned my page, looking at something else, to approve ordinance number 23-11177. I'm going to go ahead and read it because it's been a while since we talked. Amending Salina Code Section 6-333 by defining parade, rolling parade, and amending the definition of block parties, amending Salina Code Section 6-361 by identifying the permit level applicable to block parties and rolling parades, amending Salina Code Section 6-379 by establishing how an event is determined to be a rolling parade and repealing the existing sections. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0. That will, that will move us into resolution number 23-11177. That will re, that will move us into resolution number 23-8155. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move we approve resolution 23-8155, amending fees for special event permits pursuant to Chapter 6, Article 5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 23-8155, amending fees for special event permits pursuant to Chapter 6, Article 5. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to refund those who have previously paid in previous events since these fees went into effect.
And what percentage would that be in dollar amount? Did you want to give that a?
If that's helpful, I've been thinking about that a little bit. If you want to word that as refund fees paid in excess of the amounts recently adopted by this resolution, then we'll calculate the difference and refund the difference.
Make a motion, we approve to refund fees for previous scheduled events to be in line with the current fees we just passed in resolution number 23-8155.
Second.
I need to recuse.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Davis is going to recuse himself. Just go stand in the door, okay? We have a motion and a second to refund fees, I'm now, um, subject to the current fee structure as approved in resolution number 23-8155. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That item passes 4-0. Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for everyone for your time being here, and good luck with your parade and your motorcycle enthusiasts. I hope you have a good time and good weather. Thank you.
Guys, come out because you have never heard thunder. You guys just need to come out.
I'm at, I'm at Harley Day every year at K-State, so I know what thunder sounds like, so.
So come on out and watch it.
I have a soft tail.
Thank you, guys. Okay. That will lead us to item. Let's give everybody about a couple minutes here to clear out.
We got there.
For a living.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, I guess the room is clear now.
Okay, that will lead us to item 6.5.
Item 6.5, approve ordinance number 23-11166 on first reading, amending Chapter 38, Article 1 of the City of Salina Municipal Code by adopting the 2023 standard traffic ordinance for Kansas cities published by the League of Kansas Municipalities and repealing existing Section 38-1.
Ms. Trocheck, how are you doing?
Good afternoon, good evening, I guess, Commissioners, Mayor Hoppick. I am here to present the ordinance number 23-11166. That is the ordinance to adopt the current standard traffic ordinance as published by the League of Kansas Municipalities. As this commission is aware, the STO handbook is modeled after the Kansas Uniform Act regulating traffic on the state's highways, and the STO serves as the primary method of enforcement of the Salina Police Department with regard to traffic enforcement in the City of Salina. The League has published the 2023 edition of the STO handbook, which incorporates the amendments made during the 2023 legislative session. With regard to the standard traffic ordinance, there were not many changes made during the 2023 legislative session, but I have included a summary of the changes. I think the primary impact on Salina Municipal Court is going to be the change to Section 194, which addresses driving while suspended. The change in the ordinance would remove the mandatory term of confinement for first and second time offenders driving on a suspended license if their license is suspended solely due to a failure to pay a fine or failure to appear. And the bill also requires a minimum fine of $100 for those violations. I am not recommending any changes to the 2023 edition of the STO, other than the standing local amendments that we have currently, and I've included that on the blue sheet. The commission has five options. You can approve ordinance number 23-11166 on first reading. You can approve it with amendments as you deem appropriate. Three, you can postpone consideration of the ordinance to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments. The city commission would like to request for your further consideration. Four, you can approve the ordinance on first reading and provide direction regarding additional information or amendments. The city commission would like to request for your further consideration at the time of second reading, or you can vote to deny the ordinance. I am recommending that you adopt option number one.
Okay, any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Sorry. Just probably morbid curiosity, how come cotton bales are treated different from?
I'm sorry?
How come cotton bales are treated from other loads that are spilled on a highway?
You know, I reviewed that this afternoon, and frankly, Dr. Davis, I don't have an answer for that.
I'm assuming someone thought it through, and, and someone higher than us thought it was appropriate. I was just curious. Okay. Probably doesn't happen that much in the city limits.
No, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23-11166 on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11166 on first reading. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0. That will lead us to item 6.6.
Item 6.6, approve ordinance number 23-11167 on first reading, amending Chapter 25, Article 1 of the City of Salina Municipal Code by adopting the 2023 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities published by the League of Kansas Municipalities and repealing existing Section 25-1.
Thank you. Again, I'm here to present ordinance number 23-11167, and asking you to adopt the 2023 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities as published by the League of Kansas Municipalities. The Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities is, again, like the STO, published annually by the League of Kansas Municipalities. The handbook is modeled after state criminal code, and the UPOC serves as the primary criminal ordinance enforcement handbook for the Salina Police Department. The League has published the 2023 edition of the UPOC handbook, which incorporates amendments made to state criminal laws during the 2023 legislative session. I've listed the three local amendments that we have. I've also attached a summary of the changes to the 2023 edition of the UPOC. As you see, there were more changes that were incorporated during the 2023 legislative session. I've also included changes based on my recommendation. As in prior years, the city is declining, or I'm suggesting that we decline to adopt certain provisions after consultation with other department heads, including the Director of Utilities, who's recommended that we not adopt 6-114 and 6-115 relating to unlawful deposits in sewers and damaging sewers because the code within the Salina Code provides more specificity and actually provides more stringent penalties than the UPOC does in some instances. I'm also declining, or asking to decline to adopt Section 10.13, barbed wire, 10.18, failure to place or maintain a smoke detector, Section 10-point, or 10-24, smoking prohibited, Section 1025, smoking, posting premises, Section 10-26, smoking prohibited, and Section 11.3, commercialization of wildfire, or wildlife, excuse me. There are existing ordinances that better cover this conduct, and they do so in a way that's better suited for the City of Salina. The third section of my blue sheet addresses other sections that the, I'm recommending we not adopt based on current resources in Salina Municipal Court, and based on a standing tradition of those offenses being handled in Saline County District Court. That includes Article 7A, crimes affecting public trust, Section 616, giving a worthless check, Section 617, criminal use of a financial card, Section 9.9.3, unlawful distribution of controlled substances, Section 9.9.4, unlawful possession of controlled substances, Section 9.9.6, distribution of non-controlled substances, and Section 1115, permitting a dangerous animal to be at large. Again, these offenses would be, as they are now referred to, prosecution by the county attorney's office in Saline County District Court. The language in UPOC 7.14, I believe, is still incorrect in subsection B4. Currently, the subsection reads, "A candidate transmitting or delivering an advance voting ballot in accordance with Section 2B and amendments thereto." A Section 2B doesn't exist within the UPOC, and I recommend that this be amended to state "A candidate transmitting or delivering an advance voting ballot in accordance with KSA 25-2437 Subsection B and amendments thereto." This language is consistent with the change that was made during the 2022 legislative session, but not changed in the publication of the 2023 UPOC by the Kansas League of Municipalities. You have, again, five options with regard to this proposed action. You can approve the ordinance on first reading. You can approve it with amendments as you deem appropriate. You can postpone consideration to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments you would like to request for further consideration. You can approve it on first reading and provide direction regarding additional information or amendments. The city commission would like to request for further consideration at the time of the second reading, or you can vote to deny ordinance number 23-11167. I'm recommending that you adopt option number one.
Okay, questions from it?
No questions.
None. The only thing I highlighted is, on the Salina Airport Authority, I thought they were already, already able to discharge firearms because of wildlife.
They are, and that subsection just updates the change in the Kansas Department of Wildlife Parks and Tourism, name change to Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks. So they've took, taken out the tourism part, so we're just making that change to be consistent with the change in the agency name.
I was going to say, Tim's in trouble. I know he's been out there shooting wildlife, so.
They are still allowed to do that.
Okay, well, I, I thought he was allowed to already, so, okay.
He has been.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23-11167 on first reading.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11167 on first reading. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, that will lead us to item 7.1.
Item 7.1, consider approval of a development agreement with the Mark Augustine Trust addressing current and future improvements to South Knight Street abutting the Augustine addition to the City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas.
Okay, as Mr. Andrew comes up here, I've talked to city manager about this because we have three items that are development agreements, and, and we talked a little bit about how to try to condense part of it so we don't have to say the same thing three times. But I do need to let everyone know, when we get to voting on, and talking about specifics on 7.3, I will need to recuse myself.
Right, so Mr. Andrew and I had a chance to talk, the, as I think you're already aware from prior deliberations, all of these development agreements relate to perimeter streets and our perimeter street policy. So rather than give you that background three times over, the intent is to provide you that overarching background as it relates to the codes and the perimeter street requirements, and then we individually, we can talk about each project and the development agreement specifics, and hopefully that'll expedite that conversation.
Okay, Mr. Andrew.
This, this is a topic that has, the city has struggled with, and it struggled with for a full year in 2016, when there was a moratorium on new subdivisions while it was wrestled with. And the problem comes up when the city grows out into fringe areas, and we're growing into areas where there's a street, and the street may even be hard-surfaced, but it's not a street that meets current city street standards. But there, we have development that wishes to have access to that street for their subdivision or their development. So the three items that you have before you this evening all relate to developments that are on the fringe of the city, and they all relate to subdivisions that abut a street that doesn't meet the full city standard. So the, the default position is that the developer wishing to develop their subdivision has to upgrade that abutting street to a full city street standard. And a full city street standard is at least 33 feet of paving width, 6 inches of concrete or 8 inches of asphalt, curb and gutter, and sidewalks on both sides. That would be the typical street that you would see as an internal street in a new subdivision. In the cases before you tonight, the abutting street doesn't meet that standard. And so there was a safety valve that was put into that ordinance that created what is called an interim street standard, and that interim street standard is 24 feet of paving width, no curb and gutter, and sidewalk on one side. So if you're looking for an example of, show us an interim street in the City of Salina, I would show you Markley Road. Markley Road is paved with asphalt. It does not have curb and gutter that you typically have on a public city street, and it has sidewalks on one side, on the east side. So those subdivisions on the east side of Markley Road were allowed to develop with, through the approval of a benefit district, and that benefit district assures the city control over when improvements would be made to Markley Road. The interim improvement that was made was the installation of a sidewalk along the east side of Markley Road. So the three cases you have this evening all involve streets that are paved, they meet the 24-foot paving width, they have adequate thickness, they do not have curb and gutter, and they do not have any sidewalk section. So under our current standard, there is no such thing as a rural street standard in our subdivision regulations. The lowest standard is the interim street, and there's no provisions in our current code for deferring or waiving the sidewalk requirement. So in each case that's coming before you this evening is a request from the developer to be allowed to develop their subdivision with a improvement of the abutting street to an interim street standard, and having a development agreement that sets out the timing and the triggers for when the abutting street would need to be improved to a full city street standard. And so. And so what was used in the case of Markley Road was essentially using the Institute of Transportation Engineers', um, guidelines for when a street, based on its design, meets a level of service C. In the case of Markley Road, it was determined that a level of service C would be sixty-eight-hundred vehicles a day. And in the cases here, um, we've determined that the level of service C would be ten-thousand vehicles a day on North Ohio and seventy-five-hundred on South Ninth. And so in the case of Markley Road and Holmes Road, which the commission wrestled with for a long time, in those cases, we ended up creating benefit districts for Markley Road and Holmes Road that have certain triggers in them. And so even though these regulations were adopted in two thousand sixteen, these are the first subdivisions that we have attempted to do a development agreement on. And so each of these are coming to you requesting that you approve a development agreement that would allow the improvement of the abutting street to be deferred. Um, and so that, that is the case that is before you. But the, the default position is that it has to be upgraded to city street standards and then it gives you the discretion to do something less. But that lesser standard is an interim street, which at a minimum requires a sidewalk on one side. So that kind of sets the table for where we're at. We have provided you with some drawings and illustrations in your packet showing you the conditions of the roads, um, that we're addressing. We have a, a table that we provided in your packet that just shows what the elements of those different streets are. And I guess I would stand for any questions you have about the subdivision regulations or the development agreement concept.
Okay, I'll look to my right, any questions?
I think it's a good, uh, good move to, uh, the direction we're going with the street improvements. It's, it's just not a, like you say, it's not a regular street within the city, so.
Look to my left. On, uh, on the Augustine property, did you say it, the, it was sixty-five-hundred cars?
It is seventy-five.
Seventy-five, and we're currently at twenty-six fifty-five vehicles per day.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that, that is, well, we tried to put that both in our report and in the agreement itself, but the, uh, the number one question that staff has received, and we've received it more than once, um, I would say repeatedly, is it cannot we defer the sidewalk requirement till the street improvements occur? And so I just want to emphasize that the way the code is drafted and adopted, there is no rural street standard, so the interim street standard has a component of constructing a sidewalk. And so none of the agreements that have come before you tonight have a deferral of the sidewalk requirement, and I believe that every, um, applicant has asked if the sidewalk can be deferred. And as the code is currently drafted and adopted, the sidewalk is an improvement that has to occur to bring it to an interim street standard, so.
You might go ahead and clarify, when there's multiple lots, how we approach that?
So in the case of, um, for example, Mr. Augustine has multiple lots and he has almost a quarter-mile frontage on South Ninth Street. When we do a subdivision, um, infrastructure, sidewalks are not built as part of the street project. Sidewalks are deferred until building permits are issued because if you went in and put it sidewalks in ahead of time, they would all get busted up by the construction activity that would take place. So we defer the construction of sidewalks until there's building permit issued, and then it becomes a building permit item. So if Mr. Augustine has three developable lots, he's only putting sidewalks in for the lots for which he's obtaining permits and that the sidewalk would be phased in as development phased in. For those lots that are a single lot, it would be that frontage. But we have cases here that range from a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Ohio to a quarter-mile of frontage on, on South Ninth Street. So I think those, those are the main points, and so the development agreement has been broken down into two components. One cites the immediate improvement, one cites the deferred improvements, what those consist of, and then the, the timing or trigger for when those would occur is based on traffic counts and level of service on the street. And so we went back and looked at what was done for Markley Road, and to be consistent with that, that's the avenue that we followed.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does the, uh, decision that you just referred, is that influenced by the anticipated traffic coming in and out of that development? And where I'm going at, if a, you know, semi-trail is going in or out, I'm assuming thirty-three foot wide roadway is a little easier than a twenty-four foot?
Well, what the Institute of Transportation Engineers has is they have broken segments down, and so they have a four-lane segment with no center turn lane, they have two-lane, they have three-lane, and so each type of street segment has a capacity. And so what, um, what these agreements are based on is if the street adjacent to these developments reach a traffic volume that exceeds their capacity under current conditions, that's what would trigger the improvement.
That's just the traffic count, but not, doesn't take into account the nature of the vehicles themselves?
No, not whether they're trucks or cars or anything like that. So if Mr. Augustine, we end up having a convenience store and Travel Plaza built on his corner, that is going to increase the traffic count on South Ninth Street. And so then, as that development occurs, we would monitor the traffic counts, and if the nature of the development doesn't push the traffic counts above that number, then the road is fine as it is.
So it's on the developer of the property to make sure the turning radius is provided on the property side, not in the roadway?
Well, in the case, we had that discussion with the planning commission. If you're referring to Mr. Augustine's property, there's something on the order of fifty feet between the curb line and his property line. And so all that area in there is available for turning radius for trucks or large vehicles. So when we're dealing with a situation where we're trying to accommodate semis or large trucks, then you put larger radiuses out in the right of way to accommodate those turning movements.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mayor, move that we approve the proposed development agreement with the Mark Augustine Trust and authorize mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the proposed development agreement with the Mark Augustine Trust and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes five zero. Will lead us to item seven point two.
Item seven point two, consider approval of a development agreement with the Salina Health Education Foundation, addressing current and future improvements to North Ohio Street, abutting the ADR addition to the City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas.
Okay, Mr. Andrew? Or any?
This development agreement deals with property on the east side of North Ohio, where twelve point six acres was subdivided into two lots. And one of those lots is occupied by an existing building, and the section in front of this property was constructed by KDOT, essentially from the south end of the property all the way up to the interchange, was rebuilt, um, when the Ohio Street Bridge was relocated. So it's a relatively new section of roadway. It lacks sidewalks, and so under the terms of this development agreement, if there is a building permit issued for improvements or renovations to that building, then a sidewalk would have to be constructed along that section of Ohio in front of Lot One. And if there's future development on Lot Two, then the sidewalk would be constructed at that time. You're going a little too far south, Dustin, so it's, it ends right at that, that first gold line there. That's the south boundary of the subdivision. So that is, um, what the terms of the development agreement state, that the immediate improvement is the construction of sidewalks triggered by the issuance of a building permit. The deferred improvement would be the installation of curb and gutter on North Ohio, should traffic count exceed ten thousand vehicles a day.
Okay, questions or comments for? Questions or comments from the public? We will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, I move, uh, approve the proposed development agreement with Salina Health Education Foundation and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the proposed development agreement with the Salina Health Education Foundation and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes five zero. With that, I will recuse myself from item seven point three.
Item seven point three will be to consider approval of a development agreement with Beck Superior Hybrid Seeds, Inc., addressing current and future improvements to North Ohio Street, abutting the Beck's addition to the City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. This is a request received from representatives of Beck Superior Hybrid Seeds. They're plating property on the west side of Ohio, directly opposite of the ADR addition. However, they're, they have a flag lot, which means that they essentially have a hundred and fifty-foot-wide finger or peninsula coming out to North Ohio. And in lieu of upgrading that section of the west side of North Ohio with curb and gutter and sidewalk, they're requesting approval of this development agreement that would require a sidewalk to be constructed as, at the time of building permit issuance, as an immediate improvement, and the installation of curb and gutter as a deferred improvement, should traffic counts on Ohio reach ten thousand vehicles a day. So with that, um, I think the elements are essentially the same as the previous two that you had in front of you, and I'd be open for any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
No questions.
Any questions, comments from the public?
I have a question, Mayor, or Mayor wrote in. Uh, what is the current traffic count? This is Mitch Robinson.
Fifty-one fifty.
Is it in the packet here?
I believe the current traffic count on North Ohio, this section is fifty-one hundred and fifty vehicles a day.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Bring it back for action.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move this commission approve the proposed development agreement with Beck Superior Hybrid Seeds Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the proposed development agreement with Beck Superior Hybrid Seeds Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four zero. We'll move, welcome Mayor Hoppick back. Okay, thank you. Okay, that will lead us to other businesses. Is there anything a commissioner would like to bring before the, the body at this point?
Yeah, I, uh, had, uh, had a lot of discussions on the animal shelter, and I had, uh, committed to going and visiting the animal shelter once the doors were open and give chances, the staff a chance to get the operation rolling. And I did visit the shelter last week, and I was very pleased with what I saw. Everyone was welcoming, and I was able to go back and look at the dogs. And, uh, yeah, some of them barked, but some of them didn't, and that's what dogs do. And, uh, I think it's been a long process to get here, but I think we're on our way to, uh, getting things corrected there at the shelter. And I believe that just it being open to the public is gonna correct a lot of the issues that have been brought up. So, uh, I know they've worked hard to get things in order, and, uh, just having people be there and knowing people are coming is, is gonna make a difference, and I think it's gonna help the dogs, seeing people.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll, we'll lead us to Citizens Forum. Opportunity for anybody who'd like to, um, uh, approach the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. Um, you have, we'll, three minutes, and please state your name.
Good afternoon, uh, Commissioners and Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, I was up here.
Could you please give your name and where you're from, just for the?
Yes.
People on television will know?
I'm, I'm Ricky from Salina. Yeah, and I, I was here a few weeks ago. I just wanted to follow up on, um, the topic of the, um, the chicken ordinance. Um, so it, um, I know I've talked to a few of you about it, um, this last week and a half. So I just, a few comments I wanted to share with you is what happened, um, since then. On our last Wednesday, we noticed there, there was far more chickens than, than they ever had, and it's more, it's far more than what, what he originally had. So the last few days, um, it's been windy, so everything that's on the other side of the fence has been blown over into our yard, the feathers, and now it's getting into the garage. And I just wanted to ask if, if, if you guys can, um, see if you can move the chickens to where the chicken coop is at, um, 'cause it, it, the chickens are separated from, from the, where the chicken coop is at, from the yard. And, uh, the chicken coop that, that's there looks like a, a porta potty. It just kinda, it's a, the tall and like a three footer, uh, the three foot wide. And, um, so and the smell, the smell, the, the smell of the chickens is just, it's an ongoing, it's not consistent, but it's, it's there, and when it rains, like the following day, when it's hot and the sun's out, it's, that's where you, you, you get the smell of the ammonia. And, um, I know a few people has, came out and they had a hard time with, you know, smelling that the last several times, and, and, um, so so I just wanted to see where things are lying at this point and see if anything's been discussed or anything like that.
I know we haven't had a, a session on that, and I'm gonna look at, at the city manager, and I guess I was even taken back a little bit when you were here last time, Ricky, that we allowed fifteen chickens in the, in town. I was, um, and I, so I'll let Mr. Scrugg approach.
Yeah, I'll try to address it when I can, Ricky and I've talked on the phone. We've had, um, I don't know how many staff, multiple staff on different occasions go out. What, what we found by code, there is an allowance for fifteen chickens. There is regulation for the location of the chicken coop, but not the chickens themselves. And so the way the code's written, it, it has to be fifty feet from a building occupied by any person other than the resident. So basically, any adjoining property, not just the house, that could be a garage, that could be an outbuilding, has to be fifty feet away. We've mapped those locations, and, and the lot in question is a It, it, the lot in question is a corner lot, so Ricky's house is to the, uh, east and then there's a house to the south as well. So, I started looking at those distances and found out that the two property owners have entered into, or have provided us an affidavit of co-ownership of the chickens, with the express intent of that then being their joint ownership of the chickens and they're 50 feet, the coop is 50 feet away from the structures on, uh, the property to the east, but they've essentially agreed to the location between the, the property in question and the property to the south. The other code provision is, um, that there shall not be objectionable odors, um, that can be smelled by the neighbors. That's a little bit subjective, makes it a little bit difficult in terms of enforcement. So, looking into the legalities of how we determine that, that's why the staff have been out more than once trying to, um, you know, observe it firsthand. The, the feathers and things on the property is, is a new development. I'd like to talk to you about that.
This one is, the feathers is recently new and-
Right.
Of course, it's been windy the last few days and everything that's on that side of the fence has been blown over and into the yard and now we're just cleaning up after that and it's-
Off the top of my head, I don't know that the chicken regulations speak to that, but we might be able to address that through other codes. So, where we're kind of left is a couple of avenues to pursue. One is, um, interpretation of that, that offensive odor smelled by the neighbor. The other is some type of change in, in the regulations, but then that creates a question of, is the, does that create a grandfathering or a nonconform, pre-existing nonconforming use? Uh, I can tell you from past experience, it's awfully, a lot of people gravitate to the life cycle of the chickens in question, but in my experience, it's not been the chickens, it's the, the keeping of chickens, the land use as it relates to chickens. And there are a lot of other individuals that have chickens in the community. So, we've kind of identified the issues, have yet to get some final determinations on whether we have options to bring to you for your consideration.
Is it the chicken coop that can't be within 50 feet or the chickens themselves?
The chicken coop. The way, the way the ordinance is written, it is just the chicken coop. It doesn't create, it does have standards about cleanliness of the chicken yard and applying lime once every three months and some things like that, but it doesn't physically, uh, limit the location of the chickens or the chicken yard.
And that coop has to be located from any human inhabited building? Does it matter whether it's the neighbor or the owner or the co-owners?
Yeah, there's an exception for buildings owned by the owner. So, it's just neighboring properties. It is any building that is or can be occupied by a person. So, my read of that is, you know, shed out back, not just limited to the home. We've mapped all that, though, though, it, it creates a pretty limited area on the property, but when you factor in the, the other prop, neighboring property owner's willingness to have this affidavit of co-ownership, that then kind of frees up a little bit of space in their backyard for the chicken coop.
Do, uh, is this code written based on, and I'm just throwing, because I have no idea where it come from. Is this like from the Kansas Department of Health? Or is this, do we know where that came from and how do we review that and?
I recall when it was adopted and I believe it was an example from another community. I can't, a larger community, but I don't know the specifics beyond that. Um, I just know that, uh, staff replicated an existing code from another community, I believe.
Do we have a code that does not allow roosters in the community, you know? Chickens are bad, roosters be, yeah.
There was a discussion out between some of us about is there a thing for roosters or not or, and the, and no one really didn't have a, which direction to, of an, of an answer.
Yeah, I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Two roosters? Okay, well.
Okay. Thank you for whoever-
Yeah, it'd be a-
Had two and they got a third one and they got caught.
Okay.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Well, as I have looked over this, you know, and I think here of the chicken coop, I think that's where the chickens are.
Yeah.
And in this instance, the chickens are not confined to anything.
Yeah, in this case, the chickens is in one part of the, of the yard and the chicken coop is on the other part. And it just seems like it, it just makes sense if you have the chicken with the chicken coop area.
Uh, to be honest, I, that's what I expected when I went to look up the code. I was surprised to find out that that wasn't the case.
Ricky, keep us informed, we're going to continue to, to review this. This isn't a, this isn't an everyday occurrence.
It was a topic of conversation in the city manager's office today. That, we've gotten this far, now what's the next step?
Yeah, so that's why we came back here, just because if, if there was any discussion since I was here the last and you and I have talked a little bit about it and Bill, you and I kind of went over some stuff about it also and-
Yeah, I, I wish it was more clean cut. Here's the code, it's a violation, we deal with it. Unfortunately, uh, we need to figure out what options-
We'll continue to have staff review and see what we, where, where we end up, so.
All right, well, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you for being here again.
Thank you.
Are we at liberty to write this ordinance any way we want, other than maybe there's a grandfathering issue here possibly?
Yeah, I think, I think we probably have pretty broad latitude about how we want to write the ordinance, but it will become a grandfathering question, so.
And how old is this? How long has this been in place? I mean, I'm thinking people had bigger lot sizes and, you know, it's a different world 20 years ago or 40 years ago when it was drafted and then the lot sizes we have now and, uh-
Well, my tenure's getting a little bit longer, but I want to say it was 10, May, when was it?
It was originated in 1980 with the last amendment taking place in 1999.
Like over the last 40, 50 years, I think-
So, maybe we changed the, increased the number, because there was a more recent change, uh, around 2010, I think. Uh, but that may have just been increasing the number of chickens that you could have.
Okay, we'll continue looking at it.
Rosemary Mice, Salina, Kansas. I happen to walk my dog by their house and before I get to their house, my eyes start burning. And they burn for probably three or four more houses down, uh, the opposite street when I walk by there. So, I can imagine what it would be like just living next door to them all the time. So, it is, I mean, as a pass, walking by, you can hit-
And it does, it does sound like odor is part of the, of the code, so we'll need to-
We, I've been out and we've had other stuff out. It must be kind of episodic, but we'll still-
Well, it probably depends on how often they've cleaned the coops or the yard and what direction the wind's blowing too, so.
Yeah, because I, my eyes will burn from, from their house till I get down a few houses off of the other block, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any objective way to quantify the odor or issue that's created? I mean, I've had the neighbor with chickens experience and, uh, I don't know honestly what you do, I mean, unless they come into your yard and then your dog takes care of it.
Um, in answer to your question, I, one staff member did a little bit of research to, with KDHE to see if they, there was any testing method.
Yes.
All I know is they were going to check. I didn't hear back, so I presume that they didn't find anything.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Commissioner Chad Farber again, Salina. Um, I wish you would, uh, put somewhere on your schedule about revisiting those fees and, and I know we slashed them in half, but, um, application fee is fine, I get that. Staff has to deal with that, but, uh, some of the permit fees are, are still a little out of bounds. Um, I also caught a few of the comments that people were having, uh, issues, uh, with the online application for the, the permitting and, um, and the website as well, the city website. And that ties in with things that we've discussed, you've discussed before with the, um, notices being placed on the city website as opposed to a, a, a written newspaper. Uh, so that may be something you want to visit again as well. And, uh, I, I was kind of taken a black, taken aback by the city manager when he kind of, um, passed the blame to other staff members who didn't have the authority to make a decision. We're making decisions. And then to Ms. Driscoll as well, who was not here to, uh, defend herself and, and I was taken a little bit aback by that, uh, but perhaps give Ms. Driscoll an opportunity to defend herself when she goes back in.
If I could, that, that wasn't my intent. My point was that the conversation that started was with the staff member that couldn't answer the question. We asked for additional time for Ms. Driscoll to return their phone call and in the intervening time, uh, the social media conversation struck up. So, wasn't being critical of the staff person, they just, they weren't the person to speak to. We were trying to get the right person to contact with them.
And in that staff person's defense, they didn't try to take-
Right.
You know, they didn't try to overstep their authority, so.
And that, that explanation helps, that just in the heat of the moment with everything, it just came across as, you know, pushing it over and I didn't want her to-
No, I, I was actually trying to defend staff that they were staying within their lane and we just needed a little bit of time to have a conversation and we didn't get that opportunity.
Thanks for the clarity.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else?
Mayor, Commissioners, John Blanchard, uh, first of all, Trent. Don't run away, I need to get you to sign a check and we have a 7 o'clock meeting. I got to be there at 6:30, so. Anyway, um, and then one last thing, as a Kansas State Wildcat graduate, I'm anti-bird also, Mayor. No joking around.
Yeah.
My apologies. Um, at the, at your meeting last week, when you talked about the Building Square footage on that, you had, part of the action, it sounded like you were going to have this city manager come back with some sort of agreement or a letter and stuff. Any time, any timeline on when that letter or agreement is going to come back before you?
I don't have one other than it's at the top of the list.
Okay, I was waiting for that to pause. There we go. Okay, so, so you don't have a time when that's-
I would think in the next week or two, but, uh, we got to get it drafted and get it on the agenda.
Okay, um, just as, uh, while you're looking at, you must, might also want to look at the development plan, the development agreement as, as it regards to the RHID process and how the MIH is effective and what qualifies for MIH for the past actions. And I want to talk about, go back and basically just look at your July 10th, uh, staff report. There are a lot of concerns there, um, a lot of milestone issues, um, a lot of, uh, emergency access, ironically enough, issues on emergency access as well. But what I want to main, what, what I really would like to get some sort of response to is that on our apartment RFP, and I'll just preface this with, we're coming up upon an election and as we know, last year during the election time, there was a lot of talk about apartments out by Menards and the election came and went and nobody was told that that project had died because other candidates weren't given the information that some, that the candidates that serve on this board have. So, my concern is, is that we have an RFP that we chose a, a developer for at the end of March, that was six months ago. On your timeline, you have targeted April 24th for a development agreement to be signed and, and put into place. We've hired outside counsel to help to negotiate that contract. We've had a financial advisor, so I'd like to kind of, if we can maybe get a, an update next week on where that process is, how much money we spent for the outs, for the special counsel and for the, um, financial advisor. Appreciate that. So, anyway, um, I would echo, I hope that you'll look at a cost recovery model on some of those fees, but I appreciate the small step you made, uh, today on, on those permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, I will accept a motion for adjournment. Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll be back here next week.